Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to take a motion to adjourn executive session and open the meeting for tonight for the Board of Trustees, March 24th, 2015. Trustee Wazillo? Second, trustee Golio. All in favor? Okay. So, we're opening the meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then I will say a short prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would just like to take a moment of silence for the horrible crash that happened this morning on German Wings Airbus A320 where 150 people died. Amen? Thank you. Okay, welcome, everyone. The mayor is not here. So, I am here.
Trustee O'Donnell has been excused also.
Trustee O'Donnell has been excused, and that leaves the rest of us. Okay. We do. We're going to open with the courtesy of the floor if anyone wants to come up and say something about anything. Is this going to be about the rec? Okay, why don't we? That's going to be the first item, and we'll put that all together. I should have mentioned that, sorry. Other than the first item? Okay. So, matters requiring action. Update from the C A B, the Conservation Advisory Board on High Street Shed Project. Consideration for a motion to authorize the village administrator to retain the services of Save a Tree to provide a tree inventory on village property located on Hill Street for a cost not to exceed $1,600 as recommended by the C A B for the funds to be expended from the Segregated Recreation Development Fund. Do I have a motion on this?
We're doing the hearing first, the presentation?
Well, we'll open up for discussion, and then we can go from there. Trustee Golio. Discussion?
Second.
Second, trustee Cassell. Discussion. Okay. So, why don't we start with anyone on the board have anything to say about this?
Well, I know the C A B was going to make a presentation, but essentially, this came about because the mayor wanted to, you know, clean that area up, which he needs it desperately. Initially, it was going to be like clear-cutting, and then the members of the C A B thought that there may be a better way of doing it because, you know, your clear-cut, it creates all other issues with drainage, et cetera. And the C A B had meetings and came up with a plan. The first thing that needed to be done was to get this tree inventory. So, that's where that came from. As far as the funds, I mean, it was just suggested we get it from the rec fund because it is, well, it's not an official park. It is going to be a recreational area. I know there are members of the C A B who-
The rec committee is here, so we want to hear from you guys.
Yeah. So, let me, Kathy, before? I'm sorry, go on. If you're done, if you've finished.
No, I mean, that's, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So, I know the recreation committee had some questions or concerns about using money from the rec fund for the open space. So, you know, we won't comment on that now. If it does come up, we'll address any questions at that time.
So, can we hear what they have, what the proposal is?
Sure.
Right.
Now, you can come up.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, for the proposal from the C A B? Okay. Now, I get it. We're going to hear the proposal from the C A B, then we'll hear from the rec fund, and by then, I should have this down pat.
Neil, you're on.
I think it takes me like three or four item numbers to get the hang of this.
Good evening. I am Neil Deepas Gwahal. I'm the chairman of the C A B, and I'm a licensed P E. The program that we intend to put forward consists of four phases. The first phase is the evaluation of what we have on the parcel. Now, I refer to it as a parcel. Other people refer to it as a view shed. Other people refer to it as a park. So, I'm not quite sure what it is. But the open space inventory lists it as a parcel. So, for the time being, we'll refer to it as a parcel. We've been working with Marcus Paul Volposelli, who's with HAN, and also George Palmer, who is with HAN. Lucille Muntz, as a licensed landscape architect, came in to assist us in our evaluation. And in turn, she introduced us through, Marcus, you can explain the process, Pat Matt Wyble, who is with Save a Tree. Matt is a registered consulting arborist. We interviewed him, very impressed with his knowledge and credentials, and we highly recommend that the board approve our hiring of Matt to assist us. Matt, can you come up here? Matt Wyble?
Hello. I'm Matt Wyble. In addition to being a registered consulting arborist, I'm an I S A certified arborist and tree risk assessment qualified through the I S A.
Matt, that mic goes up if you want to, or take it off, whatever.
There we go. Sorry. All right. Sorry. I'm Matt Wyble. In addition to being a registered consulting arborist, I'm also an I S A certified arborist and tree risk assessment qualified through the I S A. I S A is the International Society for Rural Culture. My work with Savetry Consulting Group, I've done tree inventories, risk assessments for many properties, MIT, Vassar College, Roosevelt Island, Bushnell Park, and downtown Hartford. So, it's kind of work I do on a regular basis and familiar with the process. Basically, part of this inventory, I would tag every tree six inches and greater with a numerical, circular numerical tag, get the location, species, health condition, whether it's an invasive species or not, do what we call a level-two risk assessment, which is a ground-based visual assessment, includes standing with a mallet to detect for potential internal decay. I would note any structural defects and make recommendations that may include removal, can include pruning or other types. If there's an insect disease issue, I would note that as well. In addition to making recommendations, I prioritize those recommendations. So, a high-level thing might be, obviously, any dead trees can be removed, be high-level. A large four-inch limb over the staircase walkway would be a high-priority action item, whereas opposed to like a two-inch dead limb over the wood area would be a low priority item. So, I guess it's basically the process of what I would do. I don't know if there's any other questions, anybody else?
Matt, would you also be taking into consideration some of the ivy that's on the trees and the ground cover that's in that area, or not?
Right, yeah. I would make recommendations for one be the best way to get rid of that ivy. I know, I mentioned that we already have a landscape architect involved in the projects. She might be more, she'd be more involved in what's going to be replanted to help stabilize the sloping. But certainly, if they need any questions, I could help with that as well. But she's probably a little more qualified being a landscape architect for that kind of work. But I would make notes of any kind of understory growth that should be removed, poison ivy, ivy. So, that would be part of it as well.
So, you're actually doing a map of the area and list how many invasive species there are, and how many non-invasive, and how many trees are in good health, and how many you recommend? So, we would know like an inventory of what we have in there, correct?
Right. You get an Excel file. It has the tag number for each tree, you know, every piece of information I collect. That's why I collect the information on my iPad using R T I S online, and I can, it automatically creates an online map, basically. So, I can share that online map. Anybody within the board or anyone in town who needs to see it, I can have a link, and you can open on your tablet or on a, even on your smartphone, though it's a little hard to see, desktop. So, even if you're out in the field, you want to know what tree, you know, tag 840 is, you can search right on your tablet, tree 840, you can bring the information for that tree and see what you're looking at right where you're there.
So, this is just the first part, which is the inventory. The second part would be the recommendation of what to do with the inventory, correct?
Right. I'd also provide a report that outlines my observations, general site findings, and recommendations prioritized, like I said, by high-level, medium, low-level.
And that includes concerning stormwater, drainage, and?
I mean, the stormwater drainage is probably beyond my level of expertise. I mean, certainly would note that, you know, removing all the trees from the slope would, you know, reduce or increase your amount of, you know, erosion, but that's not necessarily what's going to involve. If I notice any kind of roots impacting with the existing drainage system, I would note that, but it's more strictly involved to just the trees and the plant growth and the property.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
No. So, all right, this is the first step. So, obviously, the, whether it's a parcel, view shed, or a park, whatever we want to call it, right? This would be the first step in, hopefully, turning an area that's overgrown into a flourishing area with whatever we choose, vegetation, or we're cutting down on stuff that are invasive.
Right. Obviously, without doing the assessment, I can't tell what the parcel will look like after my recommendations are carried out. I would doubt every tree on the parcel we recommended of removal, so I would think you get a better, in my mind, anyway, better mix of mature trees and the benefits they can give, and you can put some new trees, a little more ornamental, kind of mix and match, and make it a little more visually appealing year-round, perhaps.
Great.
Yeah, that's, yeah, as you said, that this is the first step to see what we have. Then, we're going to, we're hopefully going to meet also with the rec commission about what, now that we know that's there, what do we want to do with it, you know, in the future, and actually come up with design plans and ideas for what to, so going forward. And again, the idea of doing it step-by-step incrementally, and next, once we have the inventory, now we have to figure, okay, now what do we do? Then, we'll have to go out for bids for the actual landscape, for the tree removal, the vine removal, and then we can go to another step of, well, do we want to do replantings? Do we want to put in picnic benches? Do we want to put in, you know, some recreation things there? So, this is going to probably be, I don't know how many step process this is going to be, but it is certainly the first step. We can't do anything until we know what we have. You know, you don't want to go and just clear-cut everything when there's a number of trees in there that are savable and that will actually create, Lucille Muntz has been working with us, and we all know her, like a framed view shed, which is actually prettier than a clear-cut one.
Thank you, everybody.
Excuse me. The report would probably be ready by your next meeting of the board, say, two to three weeks. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, that any tree cutting could, that, or we'd have to go out to bid, might get done before we got a lot of leaves and stuff on the tree?
Yes. I'm following Marcus's lead. But yes, we would have to go to bid. Phase two would be pruning, cutting, thinning, whatever's required, based on the report. Phase three is replanting natives, not invasives, natives. That's the key. Phase four, we'd like to keep this area in perpetuity, and the rec commission can add to this. So, maintenance becomes an issue afterward, if finished. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Neil. Try it now.
Good evening, board. Bill, everyone.
You have to state your name.
My name's Joe Lucasey. I'm from 93 Beacon Hill Drive. I'm a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission, and I just have a few things. It'll be short. I'm here tonight to address action item number one, consideration to do the tree survey on High Street for $1,600, and the money was to, was recommended to be taken from the Recreation Development Fund. On January 12th, the Parks and Recreation Commission discussed a previous action item to use $72,000 to remove trees from the same property. This money was also to come from the Recreation Fund. After much discussion, the commission passed a resolution unanimously that the Board of Trustees declare the area dedicated parkland prior to any Recreation Development Fund being spent. The reason behind this resolution was to ensure that the property remain recreation open space in perpetuity. This was to prevent future boards from selling or using the property for non-recreational use. We don't know who's going to follow us. Please remember, the Recreation Development Fund was collected from developers because past planning boards could not find suitable land near each new development for parkland, so they took cash in lieu of land. Now is your chance to dedicate new parkland for a growing community. And lastly, I ask each trustee, if you choose to ignore our request, I ask you why. Why are you refusing to dedicate this land if indeed your wish for it is to remain in perpetuity also? That's it.
Thank you. I do think there are some issues about parkland. I'm not an expert on it, but I'm going to ask Darius if he could give us, there are pros and cons to it, so I just wanted to have that discussion a little bit.
Sure.
Go ahead.
When a property is dedicated parkland, it's a term of art under the law. It requires certain action by the board and limits anything that can happen in the future. For example, there's a school of thought, and there's pamphlets of this, and pages and pages and reams of pages about cases and dedicated parkland and what you can do. The state seems to think that even if you want to do something with drainage on the site, you need to go get their approval. So, that's some of the cons. You sort of lose control over the day-to-day action of what you can do in that area. This is an area, in my understanding, it contains the sewer trunk line for the county underneath it. It also has a drainage area for the village. For example, if the village wanted to do something to alleviate a drainage issue going down the road 20, 30, 40 years, we couldn't do it. We would have to ask the state permission to do it, and they could grant it or not grant it. So, that's the negatives of it. The positives of it, it stays in perpetuity as parkland. We do know there's some properties in the village and other municipalities where it becomes a burden. I think what you're doing is you're, this doesn't seem like a site that can really be built on, but you may want to consider the pros and cons of making it dedicated parkland. I know you're not considering that tonight, but it's something that you may consider in the future, and we can outline that in more detail. You just, you lose control over it, basically, if it's dedicated parkland.
While he's making his way, I have the question also. If it's dedicated, if it's dedicated parkland, and say, we decide, oh, we want to put a little gazebo there, or we want to put some concrete benches, or would we still have to go to the state for that?
I believe you would, yes.
I'd have to disagree on that because, as many of you know, I'm the deputy commissioner for Greenberg Parks and Recreation. I've been in the field for 25 years. We have used alienation of parkland in the town of Greenberg before to take parkland away and then swap it for other land when we found a use that we felt was better used somewhere else. So, it's hard.
I think that's two different issues. I think her question was specifically, can you do something on the property, including building something? I read a case yesterday from the appellate division that says that you can't. So, you're talking about swapping parkland. That's two different issues.
But I don't understand. We have parkland all over the town of Greenberg, and we build on it all the time, and we do not have to get state permission for that.
There's a pamphlet from the Secretary of State. I was reading it yesterday, and I've litigated about 10 cases on it. So, I could send it to you.
No, no, I understand that, but also, you have Gould Park, you have parkland that's memorial, you have, I counted, I think there were seven parks that are dedicated right now that are in the code. They're in the code. Hickory Park, Chauncey Park, Memorial Park, the little Vest Pocket Park up here. You do not have to go to the state to build on those, unless the state owns part of that property.
I'm not going to debate it with you tonight. I think everyone understands your position.
Okay. I just wanted to let you know that-
And I could send you the link, and I could send the board the link, and you can read it yourself.
We have built on Veteran Park. We have never gone to the state for any of the park that we own, so I'd like you to look into that a little bit closer. The only thing that you have that ties you is when you choose to use it for a non-recreational purpose. Putting benches on it, the only time that ever happens is if you dedicate that park for a non, for, let's say, a passive-use park. If it's a passive-use park, very specific park, then you do sometimes have to go and get permission.
So, if you want to fix the drainage, would you need approval?
That, I don't know. I would-
Say you wanted to move the sewer line, would you need approval?
I don't know. I'm telling you that I do agree with you that there aren't going to be handcuffs on this property, but part of this is, is that when all of us are 80 years old and walking down the street, and a new Board of Trustees is sitting here, and they have a short-term solution, they need a million dollars, they need $2 million, you know you could sell that property for a developer. Everybody talks about you can't build on something, but how many places do you look around this town and say, I never thought they could build there. I never thought they'd do, and they do. So, I really thought the main thing is to try to protect that land, so it's there in perpetuity.
My question, tonight, we're trying to allocate funds just for the study, which is like $1,600. It's not that much money. Would you be opposed to all using the rec funds for that for tonight, and we can always discuss later on when we go to spend more money?
We would be opposed to that because, at this point, it's not a park, and we would rather you go to the general fund to use that $1,600 and have this discussion later. We're meeting with the C A B on the 15th to have a joint meeting. You know, we're a little leery at this point because, don't forget, this was a $72,000 question just two or three months ago. And if no one had shown up, I can't guarantee you guys would have passed it, but I have a feeling you were. Okay? And so-
Darius, is it legal to use the recreation funds?
Yeah, appropriation of recreation fee money, I sent it to the board as an opinion by the state controller. It says it could be used for parks, and it says, or recreation uses. Specifically says that in the controller's opinion in 1990. To me, the, clearly, the controller was delineating the difference between a park and a recreation use. So, yes, it is permissible to use recreation funds on non-dedicated parkland.
And nothing we're doing tonight, or would do tonight, would affect the later characterization of calling that a park?
Correct.
We're not debating the fact that you have the legal right to do this. That's not our issue.
No, we just wanted to make sure that-
But I do, I do, there's some court cases that I could produce, too, that show that if you continue to call a park a park, if you continue to use it, if you call it a duck long enough, somebody will be able to bring a court case against you saying that you've dedicated in a passive way also. So, I just feel that you should just go ahead and do it and put it into the code the same way. Okay?
Thank you. And thank you for your input on that. I think that, here's a little bit of the issue for us in terms of the time and the spring and the whole thing, and just moving this forward. I think it's best to move it forward. I think, I just want to assure you that we heard you and that we, rather than stop this just another two weeks as the spring starts to come, let's just get the study done. Let's take the money out of the rec program, knowing your feeling about it, and we'll be able to have that discussion at a later date with more information from both sides. So, I don't think we're, I don't want you to think that we did not hear you. You want to say something, Darius?
I just want to-
Come on up. You thought you could talk from the audience? Oh, gosh. There you go.
I'll bring it down. I just want to say that I agree with Joe. My name is Carol Kearns. I live on Palisades Street in Dobbs Ferry. I do agree with Joe. We voted, we decided that we wanted you to try and dedicate this as a park and then use recreation funds, but not to use recreation funds if you're not going to dedicate it as a park.
And right, and I understand that, and what I'm saying is, we haven't decided yet. So, that would, that would hold this up until that decision was made. I'm not sure that's the best course of action either. I think, let's see what's down there. Let's see what we have. I totally get the future and that we won't have control over it, and I understand. I just don't feel, as a board, that we have enough information about parkland to make a decision on that. Am I speaking for just myself, or you all?
No.
You know, so, but we, but we-
So, you could take it from another fund and take this down the road.
I'm not sure that's how this is going to work best. Marcus?
I think you take a motion for what's on the agenda.
Well, let's take a motion for what's on the agenda, and we'll go from-
We can modify it depending on how the vote goes.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to?
I think you made the motion.
I made the motion, so, right. So, now, we just have to vote. All in favor?
Well, wait, wait. Listen, Collins, yeah.
Well, I thought we had a discussion.
Well, no, not after these-
Okay.
Yeah. Vic, oh, yeah, okay. I am the liaison to the rec commission. You know, is it, for me, you know, the question, is it an appropriate use of the funds? You know, yes, it is. I hear you. You know, I, loud and clear, you know, that we do want this to be dedicated as parkland. There are pros and cons of both. You know, I don't necessarily know or have enough information, honestly, to say, yeah, let's make it a park. I don't want to be restricted. You know, so, I would tend, honestly, I'm leaning towards this is an appropriate use of the funds. We'll continue to look at, you know, dedicating as a parkland. It's not going to go away. But, you know, I do think we should move forward and use the rec funds, which is the appropriate use of the collection of the money to use for this purposes, for open space.
And I just wanted to add one more thing, is that, you know, you made mention of, you know, a couple of weeks ago, moving too quickly. And so, we have slowed this down completely, which is a good thing. And by the same token, I'd like to slow down the, this is your field of expertise as, you know, for what you do in your day job as well. So, you have to give us a chance to be a little bit more informed. So, I respect, I respect your knowledge, but I need more information on it. Okay?
Yeah. Just add to that, you know, I do like the idea that the process has slowed down to take a harder look. I mean, I thought the proposal that we saw earlier, going back, what was it, a month and a half ago, two months now, was fairly detailed about the issues in that area, and we all know that there are problems in that area that could be cleaned up. To what extent, I think we're going to get a more finite report now, which is a good thing. I also agree, I don't, I would never want to see development down there myself. I also think with the county trunk line going through there and some of the other drainage issues, it's not, as I think Darius pointed out, going to be really a buildable area unless that was moved at some point and the expenses in accord. And so, you know, part of me, on board, would never love to see any development there. I don't like giving up our own control over that area to the state, and that's kind of my issue, where I'm kind of torn right now also. But I do like the idea, and I do think it is an appropriate use of funds, you know, from where it's coming from now, to start the process at least, to see what we have to work with now, and just get a report on that.
And I just wanted to add one more thing, is that, a question that I have, I don't expect an answer. Is there something kind of in the middle which says, you know, we don't have to formally declare it as parkland, but we can say if we go forward and we do fix it up, that it could never be built on? I mean, is there something we can, like a deed of some sort? I don't know. I don't need an answer, but, I mean, I would like, you know, so maybe that we get what we want?
I think I mentioned, I mentioned that Darius not-
You got to come to the mic. You got to come to the mic.
Come to the mic.
In the state of New York's Alienation on Parklands, there's some court cases that are cited in there that talk about if you create a park, whether you dedicate it or not, that you might be, you know, open to a lawsuit at some point that you have created a dedicated park.
No, the lawsuits, if you do something on it without getting approval. Not the fact that you don't dedicate it as, no. Your point is, if you, if it acts like a park, it could be by its use-
That's right.
-deemed a park. But you're not going to get sued because you didn't deem it a park. You're going to get sued if you decide to build a house on it-
Correct, correct.
-or a recreation or a facility. Someone could say you're acting against-
Thank you very much. He clarified for me, yeah.
Right.
That you're acting outside the scope of your authority.
It's a de facto-
Also, you could do, if Gary needs to do emergency work in 10 years from now on the drainage, someone could sue and say you've alienated parkland.
Exactly. I just thought that's-
So, at that time, I'm looking to see if there's some sort of happy medium, but what?
There, you can do, like you said, you could create it, not dedicate it, and then go through the process, but I think you need to know that you would be open for somebody saying you've already dedicated.
What I'll do is, I'll forward you, the secretary of state has a pretty lengthy pamphlet, but, but pretty informative on what you can and can't do with dedicated parkland.
Okay. Thank you so much, everybody.
I'd just like to put my two cents in. Well, I, I just want to say that I do agree primarily with what Vic says. I'm also very much against any development in that property, but I would like to keep our options open as much as possible. So, I think this is a very small step in doing this, and I think you're right. We, maybe we were rushing into something else that would have been too much. But I think this is, now that the C I B was involved and the rec department's involved, commission's involved, I think we have a better focus and a sense of what we can do in there. And I think just keeping our options open as long as possible without having them formally dedicated as a park is a good idea. So, you know, I think we're ready to vote.
Thank you, everybody. Now, you're ready?
I am.
Okay. So, all in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item number two. Can I get a motion to approve road dedication for the seven-unit townhouse, houses development located at Gleason Place, parenthetical Florence Avenue? Thank you, trustee Vissillo. Second, thank you, Vic, and then trustee Golio. Discussion?
What's this all about?
This is about, this is a formality. I think.
This is the townhouse that you can see off the Storm River Parkway on top of the hill. If you're in Dunkin' Donuts looking up the hill, the development is completed. The road is completed. The hydrants have been completed. The lighting's been done. So, we're at a point now where we actually, actually start taking over the road. The next item on the agenda is to actually restrict some parking in the area. We can get into more to that later on. But now, the road meets all specifications and we're ready to dedicate it, turn it into a public street.
Okay. And it will just be an extension of Florence Avenue?
That's correct.
Okay. So, we're not changing the name or anything?
No.
Any other discussion? All in favor? That passes unanimously. Item number three. Can I get a motion to accept the resignation of Daniel McGinn and to remove him from the? Oh, I'm sorry. What did I skip?
Number three.
You know what? I still have the other one. Think. Okay. Consider a motion calling for a public hearing to amend Section 28 of the Village Code regarding on, regarding on street parking. This recommended modification will affect the easternmost cul-de-sac of Florence Avenue. Do I have a motion? Thank you, trustee Cassell. Second, trustee Vissillo. Discussion?
Yeah, I need to modify that resolution. After additional reviews by the police chief and they had the D P W, they want also want to add that there'll be no parking on the west side of the den on Florence Avenue from point opposite number 75 Florence Avenue to a point up to, including the southmost cul-de-sac. So, if you come up Florence Avenue and you enter the new road, you make a right, you're looking on your right-hand side, we're restricting parking that whole, that whole length because of the width of the road and there are hydrants and there's hydrants in that area. We're trying to probably lose two or three parking spaces, but it'd be a bunch better for all traffic, for the garbage trucks, for the fire trucks, for snow plowing and everything else, so.
And they have driveways.
And they have driveways on the other side. So, on one side, there's no houses, and that's why we're going to restrict parking. The parking will be allowed on the house side, and they have, all have driveways and garages. So, we're gonna, if you don't mind, I may need the resolution to make this change. I could pass that along. It was in your package anyway, but if you can, it was it? Oh, okay. So, we can, and then we're going to hold a public hearing anyway, but that's the public notice that will go out.
Okay. So, do I need to reread this or just?
Just as the administrator.
Just schedule a public hearing.
So, I need, I'm looking for the, still to set the public hearing to amend Section 28 as amended by Marcus.
Go right.
Village administrator.
There you go.
All in favor?
Excuse me, we need to know what date the public hearing is.
What were the choices?
It's next meeting, isn't it?
Next meeting?
Which is?
Is it the 13th?
No.
April 14th.
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 Okay. Let's try this one more time. So, we're calling for a public hearing to amend Section 28 of the Village Code regarding on-street parking as rec, as modified by the village administrator for Tuesday, April 14th, which is our next meeting. Now, do I have a motion? Trustee Vissillo, second. Trustee Flynn. Discussion? All in favor? And that passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's send this back with a date on it. Thanks. Now, I need a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Daniel McGinn and to remove him from the roles of the Dobbs Ferry Volunteer Fire Department. Do I have a motion? Trustee Golio, second. Trustee Vissillo. Discussion? All in favor? That passes and we thank him for his service. Next is consider a motion to schedule a public hearing to amend Village Code, Code 180-5 sprinkler systems. Do I have a motion? Trustee Vissillo, second. Trustee Flynn. Okay, let's discuss this.
Yeah, the update was, the last meeting we had, Ed Mandi come in to discuss this option of the sprinkler law, it was just to change the calculation to make it easier for the applicants to know what has to be sprinkled. It's very ambiguous right now, and this will clarify the language. No fees, nothing regarding that, but just the language in regards to what should be included as part of the, of a new remodeling or addition to a home, what has to be included, what doesn't. And there'll be a formal calculation to be calculated to put into code.
I believe it was 50 percent. If you're renovating more than 50 percent by the way Ed formulated this calculation, then you would have to, even if you were doing work on just the downstairs, if that constituted more than 50 percent of the living space, you'd have to sprinkle the entire house. And I think Ed does an incredible job on safety and watching out for things. The only thing I would urge, you know, the calculation is well-intended. There could be instances where we're forcing potential homeowners to do more construction work than they were planning on. And I just would urge us all to make sure we make note of that and watch for that when it does arise. Because as well-intended as I think the law is, and once again, I think Ed does a fantastic job with this, sometimes the consequences aren't always what were meant to be, so.
So, what we're doing today is picking a date.
Yeah, date for the public hearing.
Same as?
Yes, same. Yes, same as, and don't remember, we'll also be having the public hearing on the budget at the next meeting too. So, keep that in mind too.
Well, that sounds like a lot. Should we do this the next one? I mean?
28.
Yes.
Let's do that. Okay. So, we are, we have a motion to schedule a public hearing to amend Village Code 180-5 sprinkler systems for the next meeting, which would be? No. The 28th, I'm sorry, not the next meeting, but thank you, Lee. On April 28th, which is the meeting after next. All in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, item number six is to consider a motion to continue retaining the professional services of the Fiona Companies Provide Grant and Administration Services for awarded grants, awarded grants for the hourly rate of $110.
Yeah, you can modify that. It should be 105. We had confirmation.
There are two things.
Yeah, 105.
Like I said, 105.
There you go.
Do I have a motion? Trustee Cassil, Cassell? I'll start to put them all together. They all laugh, but no one else. Yeah, go ahead.
Hartley does that too, so don't.
Trustee Vissillo. Discussion. Let's discuss this.
Yep. Oh, I'm sorry. What I wanted to point out was, you know, we've really, Fiona does a great job. Under Fiona, we received $2.6 million worth of grants. So, it seems like whatever we pay or we get back, a hundredfold, you know, so, yeah, I just wanted to point that out.
Appreciate that. And also, on some of the grants, when we do, get awarded the grants, some of her, sometimes her fees are also included, the grant, like the waterfront project, a lot of her fees are actually incorporated as part of the grant, but the grant allows for professional consulting fees. So, that's covered in there too. So, for example, a perfect example where it wasn't covered was records retention grant. We received about $100,000 in the last couple of years, and we paid her $2,000 to get $100,000, for example.
I have a question. So, her cap on these projects, we go as they come up? Is that how it works?
That's correct. But when it's continuing like work, like the waterfront project, that's a more of an hourly basis. Is this a specific grant?
And then you monitor those hours and?
Yes, yes.
But there's no cap on that?
No, because those are on hourly rates depending on what required for the state for record, the record keeping that's required by both the state and federal governments.
So, she basically has to offer a 10 and a half percent increase from her old rate?
Mm-hmm.
I've worked with her on a couple of projects and she, she's phenomenal. I mean, her company, they also find stuff for us. So, she's came, she's come to us with a couple of things.
And this is the lowest rate of all grant writers that we've actually talked to in the past. All their grant writers are about $150 to $200 an hour.
And it's been five years since she last raised it, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Anyone else? All in favor? And that passes. Next is to consider a motion to authorize the village administrators to sign an agreement with M R E S Engineering P C for professional services regarding village property located at 81 Ashford Avenue for a cost not to exceed $2,000. Do I have a motion? Trustee Vissillo, second. Trustee Golio. Discussion? Marcus?
Yes, this was the engineer we met with a number of months ago regarding, this is actually the village building that's being used by the ambulance corps right now. As we, as we reported to the village board, we have some concerns regarding the structural integrity of the building, which are more long-term, not short-term issues that have to be addressed. So, we went to look at different options of spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to either repair the building or actually talk about maybe replacing the building. His recommendation was to consider replacement with a prefab building. So, in order to get actual numbers for that, this $2,000 will be to allow him to prepare bid specifications, go out to bid, us go out to bid. He review the recommendations that I come back and then recommend to the village board, which of hopefully the construction companies can do the job the best way. And then his fees stop there. If we decide then to go ahead with the construction, then there'll be a separate fee for monitoring the construction. So, the $2,000 covers all the way up to actually, actually construction of the project.
And who's paying for this?
This will be out of the general fund.
Again, I don't know really if we should be in the business of owning this building. I don't know. Maybe we should explore other options and table this.
Absolutely. Yep.
So.
We'll table it.
We'll table it?
Mm-hmm.
Do I have to vote on a table? Or I can just say and it happens?
Table.
There's a motion on, right. There's a motion before the board now, so you can either.
Amend the motion to cancel it?
Vote on that motion and everybody says no.
Well, I don't want to vote on the motion because that makes it seem like we didn't want to do it. So, how do I get out of it? Darius, Darius here?
Oh, Darius left.
Let's amend the motion.
Can we make it up?
What do we, how do we amend it? You can't amend it.
Well, who made the, can't the person who makes the motion amend it?
You have to vote against it.
Vote against it.
Okay, okay. Can we make a note though, when that vote is really to table it?
No, you could, if you want to take another motion to table it, that way it shows the process.
Okay. So, all in favor? No one.
Okay.
So, can I have?
All against?
All against? Everyone. I just figured that's how it works. So, and then I'm going to take a motion to table that item, which was the M R E S Engineering P C for professional services regarding village property located at 81 Ashford Avenue. We'll table that so that we can figure out what we want to do.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And do, and I don't have to take a vote on tabling.
No, because we just, we're going to know against it.
Right. No. All right, so it's tabled. Item number eight, acknowledge receipt of and filing of the village administrators 2015, 2016 tenant of budget.
Yeah, this would, this would be real quick. This is actually acknowledged, but no vote required by law. The board, the budget has to be filed with the village clerk by March 20th. It was filed. A copy went to the village board over the weekend. It's also been filed on the website. So, hopefully, everybody has a chance to take a look at it. I worked very hard on the budget message. Hopefully, we're going to take a look at that also. And I'm available for any question from the board or the general public at any time, myself or Jeff. If you have any questions at all, email, call me. I'll be happy to answer any questions. At the next meeting, while I do be doing my presentation, that I know at least one person in the audience likes my presentations, which I'll do some graphics and stuff like that, and hopefully, at that point, if there's any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Okay, and at the end of this, we'll have announcements as to what dates are happening for all of this, so. We don't take a vote on that. Okay, thank you. Number nine, consider a motion authorizing the village administrator to retain the professional services of Dolph Rothfeld Engineering to provide professional engineering services to meet all D E C requirements regarding the stormwater program for a cost not to exceed $2,000. Do I have a motion? Trustee Flynn, second. Trustee Golio. Discussion?
Marcus, was this, this is part of that mandate with the stormwater?
Yeah, this is a federal managed stormwater management program. Every year, you have to file a report with the D E C showing how many, how many catch spaces were cleaned, what's done to protect the stormwater system and the rivers. Dolph Rothfeld, actually, his company is, it talks about joint services. Nine communities have joined together.
Says 19.
Oh, 19 communities, so sorry. We got 19 communities. I was thinking about the V L C. We have 19 communities all joined together to get a better price that he offers us or a discount to provide these services, especially since all of us have to meet the same mandate. Gary works very closely with them. We have at least two or three meetings a year to make sure we meet all the requirements. And then he has to prepare, Gary and Dolph Rothfeld prepare a report to be presented to the village board, which also has to be posted on the website to meet the D E C requirements.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor? And that passes unanimously. Item number 10. Consider requests from the River Arts to hang a banner at the corner of Main Street and Cedar starting April 12th or no later than April 19th, and a sign on the fence at Stop &amp; Shop starting April 12th or no later than April 19th for studio tour on April 25th and 26th. Marcus?
Yeah, they do this every year. Gary hangs the banner every year, so if it's a public space, your board has to approve it. So, it's a normal process.
Okay. So, do I have a motion? Trustee Vissillo, second. Trustee Golio. Discussion? All in favor? That passes unanimously. Okay, now we have some announcements or reports? Again, where's my number 11? This is so funny. I've had three different agendas. I think it's a little bit of hazing. I'm just saying. Just saying, feels like it now. Number 11. Can I get a motion to authorize the village treasurer to provide the police chief with the same rate increase that all other police officers have received? Increase her salary to $160,949 to provide retro pay as all other officers received in their last agreement settlement and to authorize any further settlement with the P B A to provide to the police chief as all other officers. Trustee Vissillo, second. Trustee Golio. Discussion?
Yeah, just to update you, since the police chief is not part of the bargaining unit, it's required for the village board, as the authorizing hiring agency, not only to provide salary increases, but that has to be reported to civil service. So, that's why we have to report this. And of course, salaries are public, public notice, public information, so we have to report this. The board has to approve it, and then we have to file with civil service.
Questions, discussions, comments? All in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Correspondence and claims? I have none. Minutes.
Marcus, Liz, I'm sorry. And I meant, Liz, I'm sorry, I meant to call you. On page 10, where we talked about the reissuing of the bonds, Marcus?
Yeah.
I was just going to ask, can we add in there, there's a lot of information there. Could we kind of put a bullet in there that the main purpose of it is we went from 4% to 2%? And I, and I think we saved 200 and?
$68,000.
$68,000. It may be buried in there if you do the math, but, yeah, if you could just, could we call that out? Because that was a very important point.
If you wish, what I would recommend is add it in the minutes for today and just say to clarify the information. And what I can do is then give you the details. I can give it to Liz if that's okay with Liz. So, say, we would like to include in these minutes the total amount of savings and what the savings are, interest as well as dollars. We can add it in today's minutes if you wish.
Great. Could I just say, I, could I add that, what you just said?
I'll put that in, and then you can approve it at the next meeting.
Beautiful. Thank you. Okay.
So, we're not going to approve the minutes tonight?
No.
No, 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 just that section he wants, he wants that.
Anybody else have anything? I was not here. So, that is my question. Okay, so we can vote on it. can vote on it.
Yeah, we have four.
Yeah. Because I was absent. Okay. So do I have a motion to accept the minutes of 3:10, 2015? Trustee Vassillo, second. Trustee Goleo. All in favor? That passes with four votes, not including one of us, not including me. Okay. Let's see. Now we have... Any reports?
I don't have any. I have one here. Vic, you have a pre-K to third grade or so. This Saturday is the Easter egg hunt at Gould Park, right? So it's at 10:00 a.m. at Gould. So it may be a little wet, so have them put... I used to put plastic shopping bags tied around my kids' feet to keep their feet dry, but...
And look how well they turned out.
See that? So that's the old trick. So that's this Saturday, March 28th, 10:00 a.m. at Gould Park for the Easter egg hunt. And the ages are from pre-K to third grade. Also, on April 22nd, they're going to have a mini soccer clinic for three- and four-year-olds. There might be another one for you, right?
Close.
But, close, not yet. But it's gonna be six Wednesdays. It starts, like I said, on April 22nd, and you're gonna have a choice of their one-hour sessions. It's either at 12:00 noon or 1:00 o'clock, and the cost is $100. So if you're interested or you need more information, you could call the rec department at 693-0024.
When is the baseball played?
Is that April 11th?
It is April 11th.
Wow. Was that you then?
No.
Oh.
Yeah, you know, Vic, I don't have the one. I'm sorry.
Because that's before... Well, we still have one more meeting before then, right? But, yeah, just to get that out.
Right. That's it. Yeah. Thank you.
What time is that, sorry?
I'm sorry. I'm not sure if it's 9:30 or 10:00.
Yeah.
Okay. We got time for that, but, yep.
Great. Thanks.
Anyone else have any reports? Okay, so some announcements. Public workshop to discuss the tentative budget for the 2015-2016 will be on Monday, April 6th, at 6:30 p.m. at Village Hall. There'll be a public hearing to discuss, to hear comments on the tentative budget for 2015-2016 on April 14th at 7:30 p.m. at Village Hall. The next announcement, do you want to...
Yes. Some people in the downtown... I've seen myself, the police chief, and Gary walking up and down Main Street and Cedar Street with some other people, and those other people were Con Edison. Con Edison is considering replacing the gas main on Main and Cedar Street. They were planning on doing it this year, but they actually have determined due to the low pressure, that low-pressure main, that was considering increasing to medium pressure. So they've decided to re-engineer it and maybe do it and then come back probably next year with a new plan. So just want to get it out there. It's a year in advance, so that way to be surprised. We'll try... We'll get... We'll have Con Edison come down, do a public meeting, answer any questions when we get closer, timelines, how the businesses will be affected, how residents will be affected, what the construction timelines will be. It'll be more of a give and take, and we have enough time to actually have that discussion. So I just want to put it out there so everybody knows, and hopefully we'll have more discussion about that in the future.
So just to reiterate, there will be no Con Ed work or this particular project from Con Ed on... in downtown this spring, this year?
Yeah. I like the way you put that point regarding this specific project. The issue with the gas main is old, and that's why you see some leaks. And that's why it's trying to resolve and remove the cast iron pipes and put plastic pipes, so...
But the big project is for next year.
Correct.
Okay. And then the last announcement is for the June 13th rededication of the new waterfront park. Yay. It is happening. So that will be June 13th. At what time?
That's... The mayor hasn't... I haven't heard... The mayor hasn't given me an agenda yet, so that's something that's still in discussion.
More details to come on that.
I got a couple other things, too, if you don't mind.
All right.
Real quick, just for everybody's information, as part of the state governor's tax freeze calculation that we all have to do, the board has received a report from Fiona. We're working with the other seven villages, the six villages, Towne Greenberg and Sleepy Hado, to meet the efficiency compliance program that the state requires. So it looks like that we actually meet those requirements. So we'll be able to meet the tax freeze requirement for the state of New York, which is very good news. I want to just put that out there. The other thing, just to let you know, we talked about Con Edison. Con Edison is allowing now that you have to text them with any ideas that you have, might have power outages or have some issues with power. There are something text messages now, too. So we're planning to put that on the website. You can actually call them or text them your contact information if you think there's any potential problems in your neighborhood, which is another form to contact Con Edison. The other quick announcement I want to make is that Ed Plankin's next meeting is his last meeting after 50 years of public service with the planning board. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that this next meeting, which will be April 4th or 6th, it's the next Thursday, first Thursday in April, will be his last meeting.
The second, yeah.
The second. It'll be April 2nd. So I want to put it out there. 50 years of being on the planning board. So I think it's an accomplishment, and just want to tell everybody about that. And hopefully you can give them a call, come by and congratulate them.
Okay. Thank you. And if there's nothing else...
Well, just the baseball parade was at 10:00 a.m., actually, I think. 9?
Oh, she found it. Wow, I had 10:00 in here.
You'll be late.
I would be very late.
So it's April... What?
April 11th.
Saturday.
It's a Saturday. Yet to be there. Let's try this again.
Pick up that cabbie.
Anything else?
Saturday.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.